I'll give you a few more seconds to get settled. Good evening. Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. Will you all please rise, those of you who are not already risen? Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Grace Strickland of the Wade Church. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, we come to you and we thank you for the wonderful city of Fairhope, God, and we thank you for all those that you've put in place to lead in God. And God, I pray for them as they make decisions, as they discuss and debate, Father, that you would give them wisdom in all of the decisions that impact so many people's lives, Father. So, God, we ask that you would be here in this evening. And, Father, we just pray that you would go before them. And we pray these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, before we get to the approval of the minutes, I would like for someone to make a motion to amend the agenda, add to item, it'll be item nine, the resolution approving the selection of steward engineering for Fairhope's electrical system map and associated software model, and authorize the mayor to negotiate the fee schedule, establish the not-to-exceed figure with that firm, and to execute the contract based on the emphasis of time here. Can I have someone make a motion to amend the agenda to add this item?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda to add this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing a unanimous voice of the council, this resolution will be added as item number nine. Okay, first order of business tonight is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meetings, the work session, the agenda meetings that were held on March 27th, and also to approve the minutes of the April 5th special called City Council Meeting. Do you have any additions or deletions or changes to those minutes, counsel?
I move we approve the minutes.
And we have a motion to approve the minutes, as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion?
And just, I'm seconding the special meeting. I have to abstain from the one before that because I was not here.
Okay. All right. Just so you know, Robert's Rules of Orders is sometimes you can abstain certainly, but you don't necessarily have to. We can go back and alter the record, but anyway. For what it's worth, category there, counselor?
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and Councilman Robinson is abstaining from the minutes of the regular meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
I'd like to give a nod for the retirees Kathy Gordon, who many of you know when you come into the city hall. She is the bright, smiling face at the front desk. She retired after 15 years of service to the city. And Tom Odom, for his 31 years of service to the city, they retired last week. I also wanted to give a couple of framed awards, but I wanted to first say, and I don't think she's here tonight, that I told my sister, "I will get you on the bid list soon," because I think this is like the 10th thing she's framed for me for free. So, thank you, Kelly.
The first picture here was a contest for Fit Hitters for the anti-litter campaign, and this is the winning poster by Tawny Bowden. Is he here?
She...
What's her name?
Towns.
I know towns, but it is a boy.
T-O-W-N.
I have a daughter named Tyler and Amy. Anyway, I want to give this to you, and this will also be on a t-shirt. And when kids sign the anti-litter campaign with this design, I want you to look at it. We have three of these. One of the young men, come on out. Just moved out of town Saturday. So, I'll be mailing his, and then I guess one is not here tonight. But Jacob Hartley, this is in special recognition of the many, many hours of community service given to complete your Eagle Scout project, to achieve the Eagle Scout Award, and the outstanding qualities that you've shown in the achievement thereof. We sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on tonight's agenda is public participation. This will be pertaining only to agenda items. If you have any comments not pertaining to the agenda items, we respectfully ask that you wait until the completion of tonight's meeting after Agenda Item Nine. That was the item that we added. There will be another chance for you to speak on any items that are not on the agenda. So, now I will open up public participation to agenda items. If you would like to speak, come forward to the podium. Please state your name and address clearly for the record.
I live at 916 C. Cliff Drive. Here to make a comment about Agenda Item Five, which is to extend the plan unit development by Publix. I spoke about this item before. I think the face of the council has changed based on their voting on this item, agenda item before. I think the mayor's office has changed based on this agenda item before. And I personally think that, I was personally surprised to see it on the agenda, to be extended. I figured if you would just let it drop, it would have all been over, and it would have at least reverted back to the previous approved plan. So, I hope that you will vote the thoughts and voices of the citizens of Fairhope and not out of some other fear, or personal agenda, or whatever issue is. I think the citizens of Fairhope have been very clear on this item. So, thank you very much.
Francis Rip, the Rip Report. First of all, I'd like to say that I enjoyed reading that 14-4 that you had posted there, disrupting a public meeting about rude behavior and everything. I hope that that is also for you as well as us.
You talking to me?
No, I'm talking, yes, yes, I am talking to you.
I didn't have it posted.
Yes, I am talking to you.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Because if we had had that posted before, we wouldn't have some of the scenes that we've already had. As far as tonight goes, you guys have heard it. This is our 10th meeting. We've literally had thousands of people show up in opposition to this. I know your pushback as attorneys. I know your pushback as attorneys telling you that you're going to be sued. If, 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 well, guess what? You already been sued by us. We sued you twice already over this same thing. No if, we've already sued you, the citizens of the community. And that's where it's going. So, if you're going to use that as an excuse, that's lame. Also, you're going to have to apply that to the other case you got pending down there with Mr. Breland, because you better hope he doesn't sue you. He just got back off of a unanimous decision of the Alabama Supreme Court. So, when you make this decision tonight, you better be thinking about the precedent that you're setting for other lawsuits. You put anything over there, you're going to have a problem with the creek, the environment, and everything that we've been having problems with. That's a fact. It doesn't have anything to do with development, more than if you can sustain the development and you can take care of the infrastructure of the development, then there's no complaint about the development. But what you're wanting to do over there is going to be inherent on the citizens of this community. They're going to be paying forever, forever, with Fly Creek filling up, one thing after another. This problem, this thing has been a problem since day one. You talked about the Tree Committee earlier? The Tree Committee of Fairhope assessed a value of $950,000 plus for the damage that was done at Publix. Did we do anything as a city? Not one damn thing. Oops, there we go. Maybe I'm going to get thrown out for that disturbing public or using profane language, huh? But we didn't do one thing. We didn't do one solitary thing. You put the burden back on us, and the citizens had to sue you again. That's how we, that's where we are now. Let this thing die. Put an end to it. Put an end to it, please. Thank you.
I just want to clear it up. I'm the one that put this on the agenda, because everybody, we've been having people coming in here, and they act like little children, like one of the ladies said before. And things tend to get out of hand, and so I don't want things to get out of hand. I'm supposed to be in control of this meeting, avoid things getting out of hand. So, let us all act like grown people.
Thank you, Chip.
My name is Maggie Mosteller, and I'm a resident of Fairhope for the last 34 years. I'd like to address the agenda item number... Thank you. First of all, I want to say that I appreciate the concerns, the legal concerns, that Councilman Robinson brought up during the work session, as they pertain to the areas outside of our city limits and the liability that the city may incur. Part of what I understand, the consulting job that the Gulf Coast Community Design Studio would do, would be to study that whole area and come up with solutions and with suggestions as to how we can show that it's important and beneficial to those areas to come into the city. That's part of the work that they're going to be doing, as I understand it, just to address that particular issue. The main issue to me, however, is this area, which is inhabited by primarily people of color, who have waited and waited and waited some more for help with the flooding in their areas that has been going on for years. They were told over two years ago that funds were coming to, grant funds were coming from HUD, and they were in conversation with the city and with the South Alabama Regional Planning Commission, who I understood the city and mayor at the time agreed would do a study that would make them, make us eligible and make this area eligible for those funds from HUD. That study never happened. The funds were never applied for, and yet, these people were just kind of being strung along, and their properties continued to flood. And they are, I'm talking about the ones in the city limits. There are people hurting in the city limits, in areas where there's flooding, and they are people of color, and they are not, they're being neglected. And that, to me, is shameful. And I believe that we should open our hearts and our minds to figuring out a way to help this community. I believe that the Gulf Coast Community Design Studio has the interest of our city at heart. They are fair-minded people. They have contributed hours without compensation to doing preliminary studies. And my understanding is that there was $45,000 agreed to, to be spent on a study that never happened. Those funds were not spent. So, I just pray and hope and beg you to please give these people a chance to come up with some solutions, some real solutions, for the people in our community who need help. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Johnny Chaney, and I want to thank y'all for what you do. People of color, that's me. In September 14, 2015, the mayor had met with us and told us that he had a SARP grant that we could get, and we had also did, brought a couple of our council members out there to see this. But I understand that the council members wasn't in charge of getting this work done, but we just brought them out there to see our plight, see our problem. And so, this was voted on at this council meeting. Councilman Mueller was the one that cast the last vote, and it was voted on unanimously right here. So, and it was authorized by Mayor Kent. And the resolution number was 2399-15. And like I was saying, it was done September 14, 2015. It was voted on, and we've been waiting that long, and we've been put on the back burner and been just told things that wasn't true. The first time, the mayor told us that he forgot to file the paperwork. The second time, I imagine that was 2016, he said that they couldn't get the computer number to get the, I guess, get the paperwork or whatever. I really wouldn't know what he was talking about, but it's some kind of number that they have, once you put in for a grant. You have to have a computer number to get it authorized or something. But anyway, we are still waiting, and I'm so glad that we finally have a change where everybody comes up here and want to know what's going on. When I would come up here before, it wasn't, this place wasn't filled up like this. So, it, to me, this is just a great thing to have everybody concerned, and I hope all of us can get whatever we need from our leaders, because we did put you in office, and we had confidence that you was going to work for us and everything. And I just thank everybody for whatever they do. God bless you.
Thank you.
My name is Reverend William Fairhope. As I was talking with Council Robinson about, I had heard earlier, in the earlier meeting, about the drainage, and as I had spoken with him and briefly with the mayor, about how this water is actually running from the county and to the city limits. And now this water is crossing Miller Street, which would be west of Young Street, from Miller Street, across over to the west side of Miller Street, down into my yard, where a home was built on the corner of that property on Miller Street and Young. And whoever, the development didn't do their work, because now it's left where I used to have a backyard. I don't have a backyard with green grass on it, because everything washes from the street into my yard. Now, the next door is also where my mother once lived, her property, and it's also running in her backyard. The issue is that the water for even Johnny Chaney is coming off of property that's on Fairlane, that's coming down a hill from the home's own Fairlane. I imagine from the water tops of their house, and it comes down heavy, heavy enough to where it pushes, the force of the water has so much force to push itself. Same way about Miller Street and Young Street. At that intersection right there, there's no type of drainage where that water can go into. So, the water, and that water traveling from, from, far as Miller Street and Young Street, on the east side of Miller Street, it crosses over Young Street, and it comes down the hill. And all of this water right here, and it's accumulating so fast, it just rolled right over into this other yard, that home that's on the corner of Young Street and Miller Street, and it takes over, and it pushes itself right into my backyard. Then my brother, who lives on Young Street, which is connected to my property, he also had the same problem with the water flowing from north Young Street, right between Nichols and coming back to Young. He has that problem. So, we do have a big problem. And we all know that if that water keep coming, we may not be able to see the damage it's doing to maybe our foundations of our own homes. We know that water can hide itself. All flowing water, we don't always see, but I just hope that we can do something before we have a foundation problem. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Buchanan. I live at 58 Nichols Avenue, and I had no intention of speaking tonight, but I just hope that six months from now, we're not having the same issues come up of the council meetings I've been coming to. It's the same old thing. So, why is that? You know, these issues need to be addressed, not brought up every meeting. That's all I got to say.
My name's Judy Bond, 213 South Drive, Rock Creek. I've been here before. I want to say bless your hearts for being here and for doing what you do, but I think you've heard tonight, and you have a full house of people who have issues, they're depending on you to help them solve. How long are you going to wait? Your mamas must have brought you upright. You look good. You dress up nice, and you were apparently raised right. Well, show this community. You know, the optics of this are not really very good. One, two, three, four, five, six men, one woman. That's not good. Tourism is important in this town. They read the web. They come here. They want to settle here. In fact, too many of them do. But, you know, all of us are depending on you to do what we elected you to do. As I said, the last time I was here, and I said something, I really don't want to have to change my mind about you. So, come on, get with this. You know, we can't keep having these kinds of things all the time. Every week, you're going to want to face crowds like this about one issue or another? Go ahead and do the right thing. Huh? Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got the... Mayor?
I'd like to say I'm glad to be here. Have to raise it. I'm Larry Morris. I was asked to be here by Mr. Arthur Cordy. I'm retired from the National Resources Conservation Service, been retired six years. I'm presently the project coordinator for the Wicks Bay Watershed Management Plan, and I'm also serving the advisory council to the Wicks Bay National Estuary Program, and I also work a little bit with the Soil and Water Conservation District. I have worked with soil and water conservation measures all my life. Probably sometime in the early 80s, I got called by Mr. Cordy, not Arthur, but Arthur's dad, had a problem, had an erosion problem, and he said it was going into Fly Creek, and he said he didn't want Fly Creek messed up, and he wanted to know what he could do about it. So, we gave him a plan, how to fix it, how to build a gully structure and stop all the sediment. He kept following our advice on various things, and in 1991, we nominated him for Outstanding Conservator of the Year for the State of Alabama, and he won. Since that time, of course, he has died, but his brothers took on the same actions that he had. They would call us all the time and say, "What can we do? We don't want to mess up the stream." And I asked the old Mr. Cordy, elder Mr. Cordy one time, what was his major concern for Fly Creek. He said, "I drizzed it out and made it navigable when I was a young man." And he said, "I don't want it to see filled back up with sediment again." All I can say is the Cordys, Arthur, Teal, who has passed now, have done a great job over the years taking care of their property. If they thought they were causing a problem at the time, sediment or any other problem, they would call us, and we would be there to help write a plan, take care of it, and give our advice. So, I think he's a block off his old dad, and so I'm just here to say they did a great job with their property. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John Parker. I've lived in this town 50 years, and I had the pleasure of serving the city from '71 to '95, in four six-year terms on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I got a little experience with this matter of weighing property rights against community regulations that would keep everybody happy. I want to say that it was quite a learning curve. It involved legal actions, it involved many public meetings. It was a real experience, and my reflection on that process, we having embarked on the first comprehensive plan in the 70s for the city of Fairhope, the process works, and I'm pretty proud of what the city has done in these subsequent years. I attended the city council meeting last, two weeks ago... I attended the city council meeting last, two weeks ago, and I observed the people speaking up, concerned about people density in approved projects, concerned about impact and spoiling the present form of Fly Creek. And those are legitimate concerns. I also went home and thought about all that I had observed of the Cordy family's absolute deference to the city and cooperative endeavor, given that they had land all around the east and the northeast side of our city as it needed to grow. As you know, many people simply do what they want to do with the land, and then they come around to the city and say, let's annex it. They don't want to fit into the community's plan. Just the opposite of that has been the case with the Cordys. They don't owe me anything. I don't owe them anything. But they are classic citizens that have been here all of the life of the city of Fairhope. It's been rather thrilling to me to watch second, third, and fourth generations participate in this community. And I'm aware of the processes they've gone through with the city courting them to annex land, and the negotiations for the type of land use, the protection of the environment. And we just heard from the Soil and Conservation Service gentleman, efforts to build upstream facilities that would protect Fly Creek, which I certainly want to do. I think that we're at a juncture now that this 51 acres that would annex into the city by Arthur Cordy, on which the Publix Shopping Center developed 12 acres, we've essentially decided about the land use in conjunction with plans to annex 300 acres. And the great majority of it being devoted to single-family residential development. I've ridden back through these areas. They're beautiful, and they've been made beautiful by the land management of the Cordys. Now they're going to accommodate growth in Fairhope. Streets, drainage protection, places for people to enjoy life in Fairhope. And I want to simply say that I hope that Fairhope offers objective treatment to this land developer. Not a thing wrong with one trying to put their property to work. Gives them due process. It's my understanding they had to seek...
We're gonna have to wrap it up soon, sir.
All right. They had to seek a revision regarding a source of drainage. Now they're two-blocked on how to do it within the one-year limitation, and I encourage you to just treat these people objectively and fairly because they have been allies of the city, and I appreciate the way they've tried to contribute to their community. Thank you.
Thank you. The reason I keep looking is this is a representative of the developer. I think he's waiting...
I'm from Baymanet. I'm not getting disparaged treatment because...
My name's Riley Murphy, 22163 Main Street. I live right on Fly Creek. I think y'all met some of my kids at the last meeting up here. And excuse my voice, I get nervous speaking in front of people, but I'm not gonna, you know, I'm here today because obviously I want you to not grant the extension. I think that's what everyone here is for, or the bulk of everyone. I'm not going to go into why, you know, it's not good for the schools, it's not good for the city, the sewage, you know, all these things that keep coming up over and over. But for me, more than anything, it's the environmental issue. Having four children, just on the six houses right where we live, there are almost 20 children that swim right there. So utmost safety is first and most important, for me especially. But one little bit of information I wanted to share today that I'm not sure if y'all are aware of, I wasn't aware of until just recently. One of the owners of the Colonnade, which is the apartment complex up in Daphne, had emailed us and wanted y'all to know, excuse me, they began leasing their units back in July. So 10 months has gone by. They're not even at 50% occupancy. That's 240 units they have up there. If we proceed with these apartments, that is going to do nothing but soften the market. Already, they're given two months free rent. So I'm not sure how we would actually deal with that. Again, I'm here today just asking, please don't grant the extension. It was self-imposed. They imposed it upon themselves and didn't meet it. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate what y'all do for us. Please make the right decision.
Okay, I think the gentleman from Baymanet may speak. He is the mayor of Baymanet, actually.
I'm not sure I'd have told that.
Well, I want you to feel the same heat I feel up here. Tonight, you're up there, and I'm down here. Madam Mayor and Mr. President, Councilman Robinson, Councilman Conyers, Councilman Brown, Councilman Boone, thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight. I empathize with you. As maybe some or most of you know, I was fortunate enough to serve on the Baldwin County Board of Education for 18 years. And suffice it to say that during that period of time, we had a number of issues come before the board that were, shall we say, hot-button issues, emotional issues. Anytime you are making decisions concerning people's children and their education, it can lend itself to some very exciting and emotional-type decisions that you have to make. And so I appreciate the position you're in this evening, and I appreciate all the comments that have been made by those who are in opposition to this extension. I understand where they're coming from. I've seen it before. As I said, I've seen it in education matters. And I know it's heartfelt, and I know that they're all sincere in the things that they say. However, one thing I did learn on the board is that many times, some of the facts that you have to make your decision upon get lost in some of the excitement of the moment. And so I just would like to, and I know that you all are up there, speed on all the facts, and I'm not going to rehash them all here. All we're asking for on behalf of Leaf River and Mr. Cordy is some fundamental fairness relative to the procedures that have transpired concerning this PUD and the moratorium. As you all know, and you've heard many times, of course, there was a one-year sunset in the PUD that was put in play by the developers voluntarily in agreement with the city. And certainly, we were in a position to satisfy those requirements until the moratorium was passed. And of course, you all know, we made a MOP application back in October that was turned down, that was denied, not because the plans didn't meet all of the environmental and drainage requirements, because they did. It was a conflict between the language of the PUD and what was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. But so far as meeting all the requirements of the subdivision rigs and the zoning ordinance relative to the drainage plans and calculations, they had all been satisfied because that was the fourth time that had been submitted, and each time, the Planning and Zoning Commission required some additional things, which were all done. And Fairhope, as you all know, probably has the most, some of the most stringent zoning requirements and subdivision regulations in this part of the world, and a high bar to meet relative to the implementation of any kind of development. And I applaud you for that. Obviously, that is good for your community, and you've got a beautiful community. I wish we had some of these growth issues in Baymanet that you're dealing with down here. But I applaud you for having stringent requirements and regulations. But I would reiterate that we have met those requirements and, in many instances, exceeded them in the plans that have been submitted. And we're asking you to consider this ordinance to extend the sunset so that we will not get caught in the catch-22 of our sunset date and the moratorium. So we appreciate your consideration of it, and we respectfully ask that you do extend our sunset date in our PUD ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Four still open, agenda items five through nine.
I'll wait to get back.
Hello. I'm Kelly Eady. I'm at 9828 Cherry Avenue. If it is just a language issue, getting back to October, I believe that's what I heard just now, it's been six months. Why does it take six months to correct the language to meet the PUD requirement? It's just words. So is that really what it is, is language, or is it something else? Because if it's just language, it sounds to me like we're saying, gee, can I have an extension on my homework? It's been six months. They need to follow the rules like everybody else.
My name is Roland Neeson. I live at 95 Blue Island Street. And I thank all of y'all for standing up there and taking all the heat you're taking from everybody. It's not an easy job.
What heat, Roland? I don't notice any heat.
Well, there was a can of Sterno under your seat. You didn't like it? I was a developer in Atlanta for the last eight years that we were up there. I know a little bit about growth, managing it, not being able to manage it, and what have you. I also know what it feels like to be the developer on this side, looking at y'all and saying, golly, Pete, I got a lot of money floating around out here. It's a giant poker game. All of us that have been in the development business, we're in it for money. Doesn't make any difference who you are. And I appreciate what the Cordy family has done for the city of Fairhope over the years. I truly do. The problem that I've got today is, is this project going to be good for Fairhope? Forget the other aspects of it. When all the smoke clears, that's what y'all are charged with, is to make certain that things are done that are good for the city. If it's not good for the city, don't let somebody threaten you in a poker game with a bluff, with throwing big bucks out there to protect a bad hand and watch you fold. Because if you fold when somebody throws out money, i.e. a lawsuit, you might as well give them all your money because they're going to get it before the game's over. So best of luck to y'all in doing the right thing. Thank you.
On the same subject? Waste of the end. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close public participation. We'll move on to council comments.
I'm sorry, I was just about...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Do we have a crowd out there?
Oh, yeah. It's a great... I just want to piggyback off of what the last man said. Having money is not wrong. It's the love of money that is the root of all evil. Not having money, but the love of money is the root of all evil. So I just want to throw that out there. That is scriptural. If indeed this is all about money, I pray that you guys do the right thing.
Is there anyone else, including those in the lobby? I had no idea we had that many people out there. We're good? Okay. All right, I'll now close public participation. Item on agenda items, remember that you will have another opportunity to speak at the conclusion of the resolution items. Councilman Robinson, your comments?
I do have a couple of comments. Yes, thank you. I want to lighten it up just a tad bit while there's still time to do that. For those of you who did not know, I was not here at our last meeting because my wife gave birth to a new baby. She and her mother are both doing extremely well, and Thomas Hospital took great care of them. I want to thank Thomas Hospital again because when Alex was discharged from the hospital on Thursday, my mother slipped while working in her yard Saturday morning, broke her leg in two places, and dislocated her ankle. Her football career is officially over. They put two plates and eight screws in her legs. So getting on airplanes will be more difficult for her now also, but she is, they patched her up, got her off, and she's doing incredibly well at home. So Thomas Hospital, thank you for the last week. And then I have a confession to make. Does anybody, any of the rest of you guys go home and watch the council meeting again after it's over with?
Sometimes.
Why? Why is a good question. It's double the pleasure. But I do it to make sure that what I'm saying has come across the way that I meant it. You know, sometimes you say something, and you think in your head, man, that sounds great. That's exactly what I meant. And then you see it again, and you're like, that's not what I meant to say at all. And so I do that to make sure the points that I'm trying to make are coming across. And so I also read the comments. I shouldn't do that, I know, but I do. And so the confession I have to make is not that I watch them. The confession is that I am the pin clicker on the videos that annoy so many people that watch these meetings. And so I brought a pencil to this meeting so that I wouldn't click my pen, and I lost it between the work session and now. So if you hear a pin clicking, it is probably me, and I am sorry for that. But I will put it down to the extent that I am able. And I've got some other things, and council president, I don't know, they're on agenda items?
Let's wait for those.
Okay. But the last thing is, I gave a small talk on civility a couple, about a month ago, and things that I hoped we would do as a community in treating each other just with a little more respect, both in the meetings and on social media. Because I think we all really want to do the right thing. That's my belief. I know I do. But instead of civility, I want to talk about accuracy. You know, you read a lot of things, and sometimes some bad information gets disseminated. And I think it's intended to educate, but when it's not accurate, it tends to escalate whatever situation there might be. And I've already heard a couple of things tonight, and I don't think anybody does it on purpose. I don't think it's intentional, but sometimes when the facts aren't right, it can create an issue where no issue really exists. And so if you're going to disseminate information, transparency is great. I think I'm all for that. I think it's incredibly important. But when the information is not accurate, that's not transparency. That is, that sort of tends to slant the information to one side or the other, and we're all guilty of it. Sometimes we exaggerate, we use hyperbole, and, but in certain situations, that can have the opposite effect that you really want it to have. And so I'd ask you, if you're going to disseminate information, if you're going to post things on social media, just make sure that... social media, just make sure that, that they are accurate. Because, you know, it, it causes concern for a lot of people, and it makes some of us look bad and some of us look good. So I, even if you're making me look good, I'd rather you be accurate. But I thank you for your time and look forward to speaking to you guys again.
Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, it's funny you brought up that watching city council members back and realizing that things don't always come across as you intend, because that's actually what I wanted to talk about tonight.
I read your notes.
Yeah, I see that. One thing I wanted to discuss was the Airport Authority, and I know that's not on the agenda tonight, but I just wanted to point out that in the past few weeks, I've been proposing a compromise on Airport Authority board members and nomination process. And I still think that's a reasonable route to go. But I want to make sure that it's abundantly clear that the two Airport Authority members whose terms are expiring, Mr. Booth and Ms. Cottle, in my opinion, are highly qualified and have done an excellent job on that Airport Authority Board. So it was brought to my attention that maybe my proposed compromise was coming across as a slight against them, and I just want to make certain that they are aware, that the citizens are aware, that I, I think they're doing an excellent job. If the mayor were to propose both of them, I would certainly vote for both of them. I also do respect her authority to nominate people, and that's why I kind of came up with an idea of, well, why don't we go with one who's currently there and one of her proposals? But I do want to make sure everyone knows that by doing that, I wasn't intending to come across as thinking that they're not doing a good job, or that I don't think the Airport Authority is doing a good job. I'm strong supporter of the Airport Authority, and I'm glad we got that debt refinanced recently. And just want to make sure everyone knows that. Secondly, I neglected to point out that the Library Board meets Monday at 5:00. And a couple of other community things we have going on. Bald Eagle Bash is April the 22nd at 4:00 p.m., benefiting Weeks Bay Foundation. The next day is Sunday, April 23rd. The Eastern Shore Repertory Theater is gonna be doing a coastal cleanup of their own to promote The Little Mermaid, which is gonna be this year's Spring Musical on the Bluff. So from 1:00 to 3:00 that Sunday, they're gonna be down at the pier promoting the show and cleaning up along the coast. So they're giving back to the community in, in more ways than one. And lastly, I wanted to mention, I had the opportunity to introduce the Fairhope High School Theater Department Friday night after First Friday Art Walk. They performed the first Shakespeare Under the Stars at the Faulkner Amphitheater. They did The Tempest. Incredibly talented group. You can contribute to them through FIF if you want, and/or directly to their organization. But just an incredible group we have here in Fairhope, and we really are lucky to have so many talented young actors.
That's it? Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Council President. Like Council Robinson, I'm glad to be back. My wife, too, was in the... No, I'm kidding. We weren't having another child. I was on a pre-planned vacation. However, I'm glad to be back. I am, I am gonna do the right thing when I vote tonight. I prayed about it, and I've talked to a lot of people about it, and that's, that's what's gonna direct my decision tonight and encourage everybody to enjoy Holy Week and Easter Weekend.
Thank you. Councilman Boone?
Actually, my only comment was, our issue at our household is the families having Easter, to promote Easter and what it, what it means to the family. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that Easter is coming up this Sunday, and it's gonna be a great day for everyone. Thank you.
Right?
That's it?
Okay. I don't want to say a whole lot, delay this meeting much further, but I want to say that I, I respect everyone up here on the dais. And as you can tell by all of you that are here, this is, this can be a tough job. And I hope that as we debate some of these items, that, you know, the facts will come forward. And would also ask that whatever the decision is made, is that you respect the council members for their vote. Because I think that they especially, well, all of these items, but they give this a lot of thought, an incredible amount of thought. And this council spends an incredible amount of time, just an untold number of hours trying to make the right decisions. So, you know, I've heard it said that, you know, we elected you to do the right thing. And I hope that you will remember that you elected them to do the right thing. And I hope that you will trust that whatever it is that they decide to do, that they felt like that was the right thing to do. So with that, I'll close council comments. We'll move on to Agenda Item 5, which is final adoption of an ordinance, amending number, ordinance number 1572, Fly Creek PUD Sunset Provision Paragraph 3A. This was introduced at the last council meeting. Mr. Dias, are you here? Wayne? Oh, in the back. Okay. Would you please, for the council, just brief us on exactly what the extension entails?
Council President, I have not been that involved in this process. It's understanding that the extension would grant them the ability to apply for the MOP. As, as my understanding is that the, with the moratorium right now, they cannot apply for the MOP, and this would allow them the ability to do so.
Okay. Well, if you would bear with me, counsel, and also for the audience, let me read Paragraph 3A of this ordinance. And it says, "That Lot 6B, which is the apartment site and associated roadwork of the Fly Creek PUD, is subject to the following self-imposed condition by the developer. Following the expiration of the current moratorium..." Now, this is as it's proposed, I'm sorry. "Following the expiration of the current moratorium, the developer is required to make application to the Planning Commission for a multiple occupancy project site plan." If you hear us say MOP, that means multiple occupancy project site plan. "Approval as soon as is practical. If the developer has not applied for a building permit for the project owner before 120 days following approval by the Fairhope Planning Commission of the multiple occupancy project site plan, then the ordinance amendment will terminate, and the property will revert back to being governed by the existing PUD ordinance. If the multiple occupancy project site plan is denied, the property will revert back to being governed by the existing PUD ordinance. If the moratorium on the subdivision application is extended beyond its current time limit, or if another moratorium on subdivision applications is enacted, this project shall be exempted from such moratorium." Do you have any questions for Mr. Dias? Anyone?
I do. Wayne, if this extension is given and they move forward with MOP, their MOP plan months down the road, I just clicked the pen, I'm sorry. If they move forward months down the road whenever that presentation occurs, will this development now be governed by our redesigned subdivision regulations and permit requirements? Or will it be governed by what was existing when the PUD was approved back in April of last year?
Council Robinson, not being, I kind of came in on the tail end of the whole Fly Creek issue. It's, it's my understanding of the project that it would have to go under the old rules that were, it was adopted, and it's really more, I guess, maybe a legal issue as well. If it was approved under the rules in place at that time, it's my opinion that we would have to comply with those rules, as it was when it was approved. And I'll look, if I'm wrong with that...
Todd, do you have an opinion on that?
I think, I think Wayne's right on that.
Okay. Any other questions for Wayne? Now, we're not, it may sound like I'm gonna put off discussion, but I think there's probably gonna be a good bit of discussion on this. But prior to that time, I will ask for a motion for final adoption of this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I've got some discussion. Been thinking about this for two weeks and been involved with this. God bless me, every committee or council I get appointed to or elected to, we somehow have to end up voting on apartments. And, you know, my take on this is pretty simple. I know that a lot of the people here want this vote to be about the merits of the apartments, and whether or not they're good for Fairhope, and whether or not they should have ever been approved the first time. That's not what this vote is. That vote happened last April, and that's not this. To me, this vote is simply the, based on the ordinance from last April, the developer was given one year in which to get their permits and get their MOP approved. We entered the moratorium four months ago. So we, we took away four months from the developer with the moratorium. So therefore, they only have eight months. This extension, if approved, would simply give them back the four months that we took with the moratorium. And I've had some, I've heard some people say today, you know, they didn't do what they were supposed to do, and they didn't get it done. Why, I think, to address what Ms. Eadie said, that it was just paperwork. Why couldn't they do it? Well, they couldn't do it because the moratorium was in place. And that, that prevented them from being able to file it. But again, it, it's not just a simple issue to give them the extension or not. I've heard people say, well, if you deny the extension, it dies. I don't think that's true. I mean, we've had multiple meetings about this with the executives, in our executive sessions, obviously, you guys aren't privy to that. But, but there are certain scenarios that we, as a council, have to examine and take into consideration when making this decision. And it's not just approve it, they build it, deny it, they go away forever. That's not it. Some of the, these are the scenarios, as I understand them. Number one is, we approve or we deny this extension today. Don't give them any more time. They sue us. And I know that somebody has said, and several people have said, well, you can't be scared of lawsuits. Well, you have to be scared of lawsuits. That's part of what this job is, is weighing the risks and benefits of every decision we make. And so one of the, one of the decisions would be, deny this extension. They sue us. They sue the city. We win. Okay, the city wins. At the very best-case scenario, the city is out hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees, litigation costs, and they still get to build something on this property. Might not be these apartments, but it'll be something. We don't have the authority to prevent them from building anything on that property. If we did, I'd try to do it right now. But that's not an option for us. Scenario number two, we deny their extension, they sue us, and they win. We're still out the litigation cost, hundreds of thousands of dollars, whatever that may be, it's, it's unknown. Whatever judgment or verdict, they, they are awarded, and then they still get to come back and build the apartments. So the city of Fairhope would essentially be financing the building of the apartments in that scenario. And, you know, and the third is, and there's been discussion of this, I don't know if any of you have heard of it, is that we deny them, they, they don't sue us, but they annex part of this property into Daphne, and they still build apartments on that piece of property. But Fairhope suffers from the traffic and the school overcrowding, but all the tax money goes to Daphne. And I don't know what, how viable that is, but again, all these things are things that we have to be concerned about. And, and I don't know, maybe, maybe it's because I am a lawyer, but these things, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you how a lawsuit's gonna turn out. I can't tell you how, whether or not they're gonna comply with the environmental requirements that we've set. I don't know that. All we can do as a council is put these things into place and then regulate them if they don't turn out the way we planned, or if they don't follow the rules that we've set in place. You know, I have strong concerns about the effect of the environment for this project. I do. But I have that concern whether it's these apartments, whether it's the condos, whether it's a luxury, 100 luxury homes, whether it's a hotel, whether it's another, whatever is built on that, that property, the topography that exists over there and the, in the proximity to Fly Creek, it's a concern regardless of what gets built on it, in my mind. But, and I, and I've said, I said this before, in my mind, based on the projects that have been presented to us, and that there's only two, being this project and the one that was presented back in '06, this project has more environmental protection than the other. And again, this is not a debate on whether we like apartments or we're not. That, that took place a year ago. This is simply, in my mind, an issue of fairness. We took four months away, should we give the four months back? And that's, you know, I know a lot of people are gonna disagree with the way I think, and I apologize if you do. But to me, that's just the way that I see it.
Councilman Conyers?
Yeah, I've got a few comments on this. Basically, I just want to, want to say that this has been a difficult issue for certain to consider, a lot more difficult than I would have anticipated. I think that it's kind of boiled down to, to doing what's fair for the developer, or doing what's in the best interest of the citizens of Fairhope. And I think there's definitely arguments to be made for both sides. And I just want to say that a lot of thought, prayer, consideration on my side has gone into this. And just want to say that I have the utmost respect for everybody sitting up here with me. And regardless of how the vote may turn out tonight, I still have the utmost respect for everyone and for their own personal opinion on what they wish to do.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Thank you. Yeah, I want to reiterate what Councilman Robinson said about treating people fairly. This isn't, this is not a vote on the apartments. If this was a vote to approve or deny the apartments before telling somebody they could or couldn't, I would absolutely vote no. And I've told Mr. Courtney that in a meeting. If this was a decision on apartments, I don't think it's right. To me, this is a decision about treating people fairly. If you tell somebody they can do something, whether you believe it or not, you don't take it away from them. My second reasoning for making the decision tonight is knowing Mr. Courtney and his family for decades. If you drive around Fairhope and you look at developments that they've done, they've withstood the test of time. They're still nice-looking developments. They're not rundown, and his track record proves what will be built. My third piece of advice is, if somebody's gonna build apartments, I think this is a great location based on one thing, you're not gonna be able to see it by the road. And two, there's thousands of acres behind this apartment that will be developed in the generations to come. And with that fact, I don't believe this apartment will decline, as some people use as their argument, to deny the apartments. I understand it, but based on the location of these, I don't see that happening. And back to what Councilman Robinson said, this PUD is in the city of Fairhope, the rest of the property is not. I'm not gonna base my decision based on what attorney tells me to, to say or think. But the rest of the property could be Fairhope, and it could be Daphne. If we continue to not work with these landowners in surrounding areas, they will go to Daphne, and it will have the same impact on Fairhope's traffic, schools, infrastructure. So, and like I mentioned, campaigning, it's about treating people fairly, and we need to address these zoning issues before these projects are brought to us, not when, not when the property is zoned. If somebody annexes into the city of Fairhope Zone R5, and they come to us with a project that's Zone R5, we can't say we don't like that. We need to address it now before the projects are brought to us. And I'm hoping that's what we achieved during this moratorium.
Councilman Boone, comments?
Well, I guess I could say everything they said, but the point of it is, in my opinion, it's just strictly, with the advent of the moratorium that did affect them, I don't think it could put them on a fair playing field. And that's my decision, it's based strictly on keeping this on a fair playing field for the developers of the property. Because I don't think anybody out there would like to have been short-changed on what they were, had put up, and then told, well, we're gonna take away these X number of months from. Sorry. So I'm, my decision is based strictly on keeping this to a fair playing field for everyone.
I'd like to make a few comments, and I'd like to kind of go over the timelines of some of the facts of the events that happened. And then also, in, in conclusion, I want to offer up a potential change to, to this ordinance even, and just ask council to think about it. First of all, I want to say that I'm the only elected official in the city of Fairhope that voted against this. If I had been a council member in 2006 when the original PUD was approved, I don't know if I'd have voted yea or nay. It's easy to say I would have voted that down and told them to put five acre state-sized lots there, but I really don't know. It'd be easy to say that. That'd probably be nice, make everybody happy right now. But last April, I cast a vote no, for every reason that everybody stood up and said we shouldn't approve it. I cast a vote no. And despite what some people said, well, you knew what the vote was gonna be. I think, Clark, I had to vote first on that, didn't I? I cast the first vote on ordinance on the roll call, and I voted no. I didn't know how it was gonna turn out. And I wish that it had been denied. I really do. I still wish it had been denied. But it wasn't denied. It, it was approved by a vote of three to two, majority vote of the council, and the majority of the vote, like it or not, that wins. So we entered basically into a contract with a developer. They made a promise to us, we made a promise to them. They made a promise to us, we made a promise to them. We said, we'll do this, and they said, we'll do that. And so, we rock along, and on, so they had one year self-imposed sunset to close by April the 11th, which, by the way, is tomorrow. So this vote took place on or about April the 11th, 2016. There's three-to-two approval. Well, on October the 3rd, they applied for a multiple occupancy plan, and it was denied by the Planning Commission. By our own laws, they cannot reapply for six months. Six months after October the 3rd would be April the 3rd, which would have been a week ago today. Now, what they had to do by tomorrow, tomorrow's date, was they had to apply for a building permit. They would have needed MOP approval, and then they would have to gather their plans, and then they'd have to submit them to the Building Department. I think that the application is just to apply for building permit. I don't think that had to have been approved by then. So had the moratorium never been enacted at all, they would have had to apply last Monday night for the MOP. And then if approved, and as Councilman Robinson said, and we don't know, we don't know if it would be approved or denied. We just simply don't know. We don't know if the Planning Commission would say that they felt like they complied with all the conditions, those put on them self-imposed, and those put on them by the city. But we do know that, let's say it had been approved last Monday night, they would have had eight days to apply for the building permit. So what they lost was about 110 days. They lost about 110 days of the process, which would have ended tomorrow. So, I would like for this council to consider, if we were to add 110 days from today, that would fall on July the 29th of this year. That would never give them an opportunity to go before the Planning Commission, because the next Planning Commission would not be until August the 7th. If we extended the deadline, or the sunset 120 days from today, we would, by one day, they would be given an opportunity, one opportunity to go before the Planning Commission. So what happens then? If they apply on that day, they have until the very next day to put in their building permit, which doesn't seem fair either, because they did have eight days. Assuming we had no moratorium at all, they would have had, analysts say their MOP was approved last Monday, they would have had until tomorrow. I don't think anybody could argue that. Those are the facts. Maybe their attorneys would argue that. But they would be given eight days. So, essentially, I would like for the council to consider this. And I do also agree that we're not doing this because we want to approve this project. We're doing this because, you know, we basically made a pact with these developers. Whether we like it or not, it was made by people a year ago, that they would be given a year, and we took four months away from them. So I would like for you to consider, if you feel the need, that we could add 110, or 120 days, and then we could add some more. That would get them to the August the 7th meeting, to be heard for their MOP. And they had eight days to apply for their building permit after that, so we could add eight to 10 more days to that. Let's call it 130 days. To me, that's apples to apples. That's basically giving them a few more days than they had, but that also gives them an opportunity to go to the Planning Commission for MOP approval, which is all they had. They had one bite at the apple, which would have been last Monday, and that would give them one bite at the apple. I would just ask you to consider that, and I'll ask for feedback on that, if you don't mind, council. It's a change. It is a slight change. It's not tied to MOP approval. And I'd actually like to say, the language in here that says MOP approval, it says if it dies, it would revert back, but I just call it MOP consideration, because we don't want to assume that it would be approved. Any thoughts on that, council?
My thought is to make it as apples to apples as you could. I mean, if we took away 120, give them 120. I mean, let's, you know, I mean, and I think what you're saying is, in order to give them 100, I think 110 is what was taken.
You took away 110, you had to give them 120, but we also took away eight days from MOP approval to the final deadline, the sunset, which was tomorrow.
Well, if, my thought would be to give them as close to what was taken as possible, but allow them the opportunity to be presented in front of planning and zoning. So if that's the August the 7th, what you're proposing, then I'm a-
August the 7th, but you would have to add a little time for-
To get them there.
To get, apply for the building permit.
I'm okay with that.
Anybody else okay with that? Anybody at all have any support on that? Okay. I have no support on that. I have one support on that. Okay, any further comments?
Yeah, I got just one more thing. Look, even if an extension is granted, you know, Mr. Cordy, Mr. Speed, I think we intend to hold you guys to every cross T and dotted I in that agreement. I mean, like Jack said, this is a pact, and we're expecting you guys to carry your end of it. And I think we've got a revamped planning and zoning, and some new blood in the Planning Office, and I know they're going to be watching you guys closely, and I expect that you'll meet every burden that you bear. But we'll be watching you guys, and so I look forward to a great project, and I know you guys will do a great job.
I have one more comment that I left out.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, go ahead.
You know, back to the fairness. This project had, I believe, three separate engineering firms look at it, review it, and give approval based on the city of Fairhope's drainage ordinance. Two weeks prior to going to the planning and zoning meeting, he was given approval by the third engineering firm. So everything's moving along, and then the Thursday prior to the meeting, three working days, Thursday, Friday, and Monday, meeting on Monday night, he gets a letter of denial from that same engineering firm. I don't think that's fair.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion and a second for final adoption. Court, you call that.
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
No.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Item number six on the agenda is a resolution that the city council approve the selection of Mississippi State University Gulf Coast Community Design Studio for RFQ number PS 021-17, professional consulting services for South Fairhope Community Action Plan, and authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule and a not-to-exceed figure. And let's, Sherri Lee, let's give people a moment or two to depart.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, this is an application for a study that I don't want to say is taking the place of a previous study that was approved, because it's a different type of study. But it is a community action plan for the neighborhoods south and just west of Fairhope that had applied for, we're going to work with the SARPSE organization to apply for a HUD grant. But after looking into that issue a little bit further, it was decided that that wouldn't be the right next step for that community, because they don't actually qualify, they don't meet the requirements for HUD for the grants they wanted to apply for.
I want to stop you right there, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And I want to just reiterate to the audience that some things that were said, and that is, one thing that, once we decided to change course from SARPSE, that we did discover that we were not going to qualify for those grants. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think the SARPSE, because I came in right at the tail end of this, but the SARPSE contract, the initial contract, I believe, had expired, actually. And when we started doing the investigation into how do we move the process forward, we discovered at that time, I don't know the exact-
So even if we had gone forward with the application process, which was going to cost us $45,000, it was likely to be denied?
I mean, I like to say it's kind of a blessing in disguise, but I, if it's okay, I'd like for Kelsey to speak to this a little bit.
Okay.
Because Kelsey also has a lot of experience working with HUD.
Sure. I spoke with a bunch of the people at the Birmingham Field Office, trying to get clarification on what you all needed to do for the application process to become an entitlement jurisdiction, and then how you could use the funding. And basically, they said that, as the city, you would be eligible for roughly around $60,000, but that would need to be applied within city limits. Now, as I understand it, the community sort of in question is both within and without, outside of city limits. And so there was going to be an issue with where you could actually use the funding. The other thing is, when you receive this CDBG funding, it needs to be spent within HUD-designated, or HUD-qualifying census tracts. Well, census tracts are pretty big. And so, when you look at the city of Fairhope, you probably don't, and I think you don't have any of those. And so what you need to do from there is basically go household by household, and have qualifying households, and the money can then be spent on those individual households. Well, that is, A, pretty time-consuming and costly, as far as administrating that as a city. So, when you're only getting $60,000, some of that has to go to administering the program, and then, that basically can't be used for these larger sort of infrastructure issues that seem to be priority in some of these neighborhoods. And so it didn't seem like that was going to be a cost-effective route for the city to go. The Birmingham Field Office, they said that you can apply for CDBG funds through the state program without going through this qualification process as an entitlement jurisdiction, which requires the comprehensive plan, and the action plan, and the fair housing and equity assessment. So you don't have to go through that kind of costly application process to apply for this funding, and there also seems to be a little bit more leeway in where you can use that funding, both within, strictly within city limits, and a little bit outside. So, it seems like that might be a better route for the city to pursue.
And I did actually go up to Montgomery and meet with the agency that's in charge of the fund she's referring to, but I, again, think it's premature to even do that until we have more information, and that's what we're really missing from this community, and that's what this study will give us. Does that answer your question?
So what, you know, the end, if we applied through SARPSE, and we were awarded this CDBG grant of up to $60,000, it's highly restricted, what is the end game of this plan? Is this plan to tell us what other grant opportunities that we have to go after, and do you have some examples of that?
Sure. So Sherri Lee has me up here. So my name is David Perks, and first off, I want to say how-
You are a real person, then.
That's right. How much, you know, I appreciate already the chance we've had to get to know the city of Fairhope, the city leader. It's been a pleasure to get to know Mayor Wilson, and we were brought in even early on, when we were still trying to figure out how to apply for the HUD money, and already began talking with some of the residents. And it was, so we came to a point where, in fact, I sent a note to Sherri Lee and to Mayor Wilson, saying, it seems like, you know, this HUD study is not exactly the right thing we ought to be doing. So I sort of gave an option, that we could either do the HUD study, knowing that we don't know where that's going to take us, or we could back up and do this community action plan to really help us look at broader issues, really help us look at other options, and as you say, find ways to begin to identify some funding, both working with the city, with the county, and with the state, in various ways we can identify the funding. So it seemed very appropriate to make a slight shift in direction. And I just want to say a couple things, both about that and about us, so that we can understand why we're doing this. I appreciated, in the comment time, I appreciate when Maggie got up and talked about, you know, us doing a plan. This is important. This is a community action plan. This is the community's plan. This is not our plan. And so, our approach to this, this is why we're called the Community Design Studio, because our approach always with the community is to be really good at helping the community identify their priorities, and this is really the community's plan. And the kind of, the kind of crosshairs of this that I think are very important is, our process will get a lot of good input from the community, and then a kind of key meeting is a meeting of a bunch of community stakeholders, with then, both the city and county officers, people that actually can connect up the priorities to ways to accomplish those priorities. And so, recognizing, obviously, that this community, and one thing that I've learned in Fairhope, and that is, you know, the city boundaries are very kind of porous here, right? Very porous. And people, you know, people have, you know, people have property out here, they live here, they go to church here, they have family out here, and as you all know, the boundaries actually kind of keep changing a bit as development occurs. And this community that lives both within and outside of the city limits, see this development happening, and are worried that they don't really have the kind of means to be part of that decision. So certainly, something that we saw coming into it is a very important need to really help the community that were coming with concerns, to come up with a plan, and then connect those plans up with the ways to address that plan. So that's, that's kind of the approach. So as much as we have a lot of experience working with communities, we always are sure that the community knows, this is not our plan. I mean, you know, it's not, it's not our expertise, it's the community's expertise of knowing kind of what they really are looking to make improvements in their neighborhood. So that's just, you know, to kind of clarify where we come from, and that's, that's what makes us sort of what we are, that our mission as a kind of nonprofit extension of our university is to really serve the community and help make sure that what we're doing is in their interest.
Questions, council? Mr. Chaney has one. Yeah, I know, yeah, as a leader, come up, Mr. Chaney. I was going to give you an opportunity. I didn't know if they had any questions for them.
Yes, yes. I don't understand why, you know, since SARPSE wouldn't write the grants, why they wouldn't come to us and tell us, you know, that we couldn't get the grant. So now we have a new regime, and I think since you guys are not the new people, but you were one of the ones, and I think, Kevin, you was one of the ones that voted unanimously for us to have the grant. So I don't know why you don't want to work with these people to help us get that grant. Now, I got water being forced on me by the city, and I've been holding off on a suit with the city. But if I don't get something done, I'm afraid that you're not going to leave me in a choice but to sue you. I got a lot that I could put four houses on, or three or four houses on. I got run from middle of the street all the way to Fairlane, and therefore, the water is eroding all of my property in the middle of it. So you didn't put a coverant right across the middle of that road to run across the middle of my property. And then the water is going downhill on other people, so I can get other people also to come into that suit with me. So, but now, I wouldn't say anything, because I got Bosa, Arthur Bosa coming by tomorrow, so I can show him this. But we need something done. I appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Chaney, I just, we're just, we're doing our due diligence. We're just asking questions. Anytime we're expending your money, we ask tough questions as to what we're going to get in return.
Yeah, and everybody in that area is not poor. I worked at Scott Paper Company 32 and a half years.
I have a few questions, Jeff. I have a few questions. First is, you know, back to what Jay had mentioned during the work session. Are we, are we getting a little ahead of ourselves by not annexing in this area that is outside of the city limits before doing this study?
Do you want me to take that?
No, I can.
Go ahead.
You know, communities are made up of people with a lot of different interests, right? And the kind of question of annexation is one that I'm sure, that there are a lot of residents that are wanting that, and I think that's, that's good. There are probably some that don't, and there are probably some that are not sure, right? So certainly, part of what we're going to be doing is helping the community understand kind of, kind of that whole process, and we're not going to come into it, you know, with an agenda to kind of tell them one way or the other, but really help them understand the process, so people can begin to kind of get their head around that. So, because that clearly, when, if we were to list the priorities, clearly, as you know, kind of stormwater is one, but also even the question of annexation is a real important question for this community. So we're going to be working with that, but I think the community has to have some help, knowing kind of the variables around that, and this is part of that, is to help them with that. So, you know, so it's going to, it's going to help the community be much more informed and more kind of organized around that very question.
All right, thank you. My next question is, you know, council, we were given the RFQ, and it's- My next question is, you know, counsel, we were given the RFQ, and it says, "The purpose for hiring the company is to perform engineering services required to conduct a stormwater outfall study for the Public Works Direct Department." Is that not the purpose of this study, or what?
I don't think it is.
If it's not, why is it on RFQ?
Dan just said that was a typo.
Typo.
There he is.
Can we get RFQ?
I think he did, yeah, and he, I think, didn't you send the updated? Hold on, here he comes.
Yeah, I hope not, because we weren't planning to do that.
I was confused. We just approved the Public Works Director with a P and stormwater management.
They have that expertise, but that wasn't part of it.
I didn't know that that one made it to you. That was a template we used when we're cranking these things out.
Gotcha.
And that little bit at the bottom-
That'll catch you every now and then.
... statement was deleted in a later version. Sorry, you got that one.
Told you I didn't get it.
Sherri Lee, just so you know, that is why I kept asking you the stormwater drainage questions, is because that's what I was looking at.
I didn't know why you were beating that to death.
I just, I'm a, you know, glutton for stormwater drainage. I just really like it.
Well, it is an issue there, but it's not the purpose of this RFQ.
Okay. Any other questions?
I guess, and that was certainly, my largest question was about the stormwater. Should we wait for the new Public Works Director? But the other question I had, and I know we've kind of addressed it a little bit, is what, if we do this study and we are eligible for grant money, we get grant money, are we not still confined to spend it within the city? I mean, how is, how are we, are we able to spend money outside of the city limits on infrastructure projects? I mean, I don't know.
So obviously, the goal of this would be to identify with the community the priorities and have a kind of action for those, all those priorities, right? And some of those priorities, you know, will be addressed in different ways. I don't think we know right now until we really start looking at the ways to address those priorities, how we're going to do that. So, and that's part of this work, is to say, okay, here's some things that are within the city that can be addressed, here's some things we have to work with the county on, here's some things that might actually define, as Kelsey mentioned, how we might go to the state for some CDBG funding, right? So this, clearly, this is about getting resources where the resources are needed, and that's a large part of what we'll be doing, is help figure out where those resources might be. Because your question's a good one. It's complicated, right? And then at the same time, if at the same time we have development going on, and at the same time we have property owners that are considering annexation, it gets even more kind of complicated. So I think the more we can do to help the community have good, clear information will help that process run more smoothly.
And my next question was going to be related more from a budget perspective. We had $45,000 set aside, and you said last year, for SARP-C. Is that still in the budget? Do we have the $40,000?
I'd have to look. I mean, there's not, just because it was budgeted last year, we'd have to look and see. If not, you know, we, if we were to approve this and authorize a negotiated fee schedule, it kind of, by definition, goes into the, into the current budget. Actually, it not only goes into the budget, it's funded at that time.
And there is money in this budget for it, I believe I saw.
Yeah. The voice from above, it's Jill.
So staying in the minutia, so one or two gentlemen made a good point that when we talk about some of the problems being within the city limits, it sounds like some of the problems are coming from the county onto the city. So I know you said you would have dialogue with the county. Would you be on the behalf of the city discussing these issues with the county and how they plan on solving that problem?
Well, I think we would do that as a team. I mean, I think Wayne would be involved in that, the new, when we get to that point down the line, when this study has that information for us, the new planning, Public Works Director, rather, hopefully will be in place as well. Arthur would be involved, you know, this team here, and I would be involved as well. And I've had some conversations with county officials already about this, just to understand their openness to participate, you know, moving forward. And I mean, so far, the conversations and the dialogue, they've been open to working together on this, on what comes out of this. No, that's not a, that's a conversation, so I don't know what that means. But a lot of these homes are, as Mr. Chaney just came up to remind me, in the city limits too. So we have enough to focus on even just in the city limits. And, you know, there are issues, as I said in the work session, flooding is a major issue, but as I said before, I mean, flooding is a symptom of something, some other things. There are other issues going on within the community that we need to talk about. And I think you all have heard from the community a lot by now, we need to have some sort of action to move forward. And this is my recommendation for the best, you know, the best step. I know the work of David Perks and the Design Studio, and I've known of it for 13 years now. He's nationally renowned for this work. So we're just fortunate that he's willing to drive over here all the time and do this. So far, you know, he's just been doing it out of the kindness of his heart, and Kelsey too, sorry. So.
Thank you.
Any more questions for them?
I don't have a question. It's more or less that I truly feel that, and I'm an Auburnite, so don't, don't be spreading the word out too much, I'm speaking for this Mississippi State group. But the point of it is, is this study needs to be done. I think this study can delineate real well the issues between in the city limits, outside the city limits, so that we can address it at particular time. And as far as drawing up maps and plans for the, the fix, once the study's done, I think the Public Works Director, who's going to be an engineer, can help with the offset of the cost of plans and drawings. But we do need to get this pushed to get a start, for the community to know exactly where they stand and what we need to do for this. I think this is a perfect setup for this.
Any other questions for them? Any other comments? I don't entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Item number seven is a resolution that the City of Fairhope vote to purchase the annual renewal of the ASTRO-25 Trunking Infrastructure Service Maintenance Agreement for the Police Department Dispatch Consoles. The type of agreement needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The vendor Motorola is the sole source distributor for this equipment. The cost of this hardware and software support is $22,220.40. Does anybody have any questions for Dan Ames?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Item number eight is a resolution. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute extension number one of the contract with Delta Industries Incorporated, doing business as Gulf State's Ready Mix for the annual bid of ready mixed concrete for the city for an additional one year as per the terms and conditions of the original contract. The annual bid for unit prices is listed on attached schedule with an estimated annual cost of $46,000. Would anyone like Dan to explain this further?
I make a motion, we approve it as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. The last item is the resolution that we amended, or added to the agenda, to the amended agenda. And this is that the governing body, the City of Fairhope, approves the selection of Stewart Engineering Incorporated for RFQ number PS025-17, or Professional Engineering Services, to upgrade Fairhope's electrical system map and our associated software model, and to authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule, establish a not to exceed figure with that firm, and to execute the associated contract. Does anybody need Dan to speak to that further? We heard from Richard in the work session.
I think Richard explained it well. I make a motion, we approve that as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. Public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, sorry you had to wait so long.
I just appreciate the opportunity. As a naturalized citizen to this country, I am always in awe of the opportunity to be able to speak my mind, to be able to listen to others, to work together. I come from, I was born in Cuba, was recently there, and the oppression is horrible. So I am just thrilled to be a citizen of this country. I appreciate the work that you do and the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Flor Fellers. Together with my husband Paul, I live at 19195 Scenic Highway 98 in Fairhope, and I'm going to read my notes so that I can be brief. Our property is bordered by Sweetwater Branch on the south, as it meanders and empties into Mobile Bay. We've considered ourselves the protectors of the branch for all these years, since 1976. We understand that the city is considering allowing the filling of 10 and 1/2 acres of delineated wetlands, south of Nelson Road and east of Scenic 98, as part of settling a lawsuit with Mr. Breland. The wetlands are part of the Tai Tai Swamp, and they're very valuable and intricate ecosystem. Its functions positively impact the natural surroundings, help the water quality of Mobile Bay.
You got your hand on the button right there on the microphone.
I didn't think that could happen in this country. The short time allowed to speak doesn't permit me to comment further on the intricacies of the essential, of this essential ecosystem. Our home is the most acutely jeopardized property by this proposal, the filling of wetlands. Along with many other property owners, we will be negatively impacted. Research presented to me shows that the City of Fairhope is in a winning position against the lawsuit from Mr. Breland. In the past, it has prevailed against his claims. I've been involved with Mr. Breland before in his attempts to develop. The city's only cause, as explained to me, would be the premiums for insurance. We question the right of the city, that the city has, to settle a lawsuit by ignoring its duly adopted ordinances, protecting community wetlands and allowing the filling of any part of these. Making an unnecessary settlement with Mr. Breland, allowing him to fill wetlands, will cause property owners to be irreparably damaged. Please keep in mind that citizens will take action to defend our safety and property. And this isn't a threat, but I want to remind Mr. Win that years ago, we put the city on notice about this issue and presented a videotape with that notice. I think that notice still stands. The city has been, we've been very pleased that the city has thus far followed its ordinances in this regard. All wetlands play a critical natural role in our, in our welfare and that of citizens to come, not just these wetlands, all wetlands. It's our collective responsibility to protect them. There are people present who stand with us on this matter, and as I close my appeal, I ask that they stand to be recognized for their concern about your prudent action in the territorial jurisdiction you claim to oversee through your land use regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fellers.
Yes, my name is Walter Woodrow. I'm at 399 South Ingleside Street. The reason I didn't speak earlier was, I should have spoke at item six, but I had other things that I had discussed that wasn't on the agenda. Like the people that spoke before me about the water runoff, I had, I have, my whole house was flooded. A couple of days ago, Mr. Bussard come down and looked at it, and he gave suggestion and told me what I could do. But the reason for these runoffs is for the permits that was given to different contractors using faulty equipments, not putting holding ponds. The runoff is severe down there. I'm on Middle and Ingleside. And he told me to bill a burn and told me to do this and do that, and I told him, it wasn't up to me to do it, it was the city's responsibility to do that. I bought, I've spent, I planted six pallets of sod the last two years, and all of it's washed up because of the runoff. And ain't nobody, I've been down to the city several times and don't nobody seem to tell me anything. Jennifer was down there almost every, every time it rained last year, but she's not here, but she never did get, we never did get anything accomplished. And that, and another thing, I had talked to Mrs. Hanks about this nightmare chambers. Now, this should have been brought before the adjustment board. She gave me all the ordinance, so I read all the ordinance. It should have been brought before the adjustment board, before they should be, before they were given a permit to be within 300 feet of my house. And that's where they was. And they would stay open sometime to 12 o'clock at night with kids drinking beer and doing other things that we don't know what they was doing. And every time I would call the police, it seemed like they was unaware of what was going on. They told me it wasn't even a noise ordinance in Fairhope. And then Chief Pettis told me that they was going to send someone down there to monitor the noise, and the officers told me that, that the vehicle didn't work. Anyway, I done had these ongoing clashes with, with different people from the cities, and I can't get no response from them, can't get no help. You know, I just want to know what, what can be done about it. That's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Fellers.
He said nightmare chambers, I thought he was referring to council chambers.
Hi, I'm Susie Glickman. I live at 411 South Mobile Street. I know what I have to say will have no impact on anything, but I'm beginning to feel, in fact, I know, I feel exactly, that this thing with the apartments is sort of like the definition of insanity, continuing to do the same thing and expecting different results. Why didn't y'all tell us before you were elected that there's nothing we could do about this? How about the pact you made with the citizens of the city, as the court is? What's the difference? Nothing, why do we keep coming to these meetings for that same thing? So I think it's kind of, I just like to be told, there's nothing we can do about it, forget it, and live with it. Because that's pretty much what we get told. Thank you.
My name is Bud Palmer. I live on 9626 Derby Lane, and I have lived down here five years. My wife and I, my wife found that Fairhope is the only place she would like to live, and we want to be safe in the city. I moved, we moved down here from Shelby County, and I had a business in Alabaster. I had actually two daycares, 40-some employees. And in Alabaster, they were going through, I think what you're going through, the process of, is a budget and the need for the police department. Now, on that fact, the police department has done an excellent job, and I have spoke to them, and I think we have a great police department. But in Alabaster, we had the same thing, Mr. Stanley Oliver, I coached his son in baseball. And he was a great police chief. And while they were discussing, how are they going to get money for more police, during the hours of 7:00 to 7:45, the Win Dixie, I was at 119 and 31 in Alabaster, my business. Those who would take advantage of people were doing so while the police were patrolling traffic for the schools. And that took all of them. And while the city was trying to determine, do we need police or do we not? One of my employees coming in at 7:00, one of those gentlemen that take advantage of people, put a knife to my employee and tried to kidnap her. They knew exactly where the police were, when they were, and they know how much police they have and what's being protected and what is not. Alabaster then, probably within two months, hired more police. Unfortunately, I lived in Scoler, which then was the fastest growing city in the state. Every day, whatever Scoler did, they had a mayor that was a mayor for forever, Mayor Roy. And he got police, and he had them before he needed them, before the situation got dangerous for people. I lived outside of the city limits, but within the- I lived outside of the, the city limits, but within the jurisdiction of the police. And my street was patrolled every day. I have lived here five years, and not one day out of five years has the police department had the capability to patrol my street ever. We have invested in properties. I have property in Woodlawn, property on Derby Lane, a property on Thompson Hall, which the major complaint is the speed. My wife and I have had to jump off of the road on Thompson Hall. There's no sidewalks, I don't want them, the trees are too beautiful. But we were almost killed three times trying to walk our dogs. We don't have police patrolling us. I've met with the mayor, and I've met with the police chief, and I understand the, the problem that the police jurisdiction is bigger than the city. But I think every street that is in the city limits needs to be patrolled. I cannot believe that we're the only street that is not being patrolled. I'm meeting with my renter over in Woodlawn and making sure that he's seen police department over there. Now, I'm not saying you don't respond to us, and I don't think that you don't have the greatest police department, I think you have a wonderful police department. But as the budget is coming up, please, don't do what happened in Alabaster, and give those who would take advantage of the weak, the poor, businesses, contractors building, whether or not, you know, my brother-in-law was a big contractor up in Scoler, and he had to hire people to keep people from stealing the stuff out of the houses he was building. All I would like to know is that somehow, I was told that the jurisdiction of the police outside of the city limits does not participate in any money given to our police department. And from what I've seen in this meeting, I see intelligent people up here who have probably seen the police department patrol their streets, but not mine. My wife is very sick. And we, we have a beautiful house, and we've put a lot of money into it. And I'd like to know, I'm going, Kevin, if this is okay, I'm going with Mr. Boone with Builders for Christ to help build a church that was burnt down in Gatlinburg in the end of May. And I'd like to know that I can depend on this city to have a police department that is properly staffed. And I've looked at everything, and, and all I was told was that if we would just have more murders in this city, that we could get more money, grant money. Well, we're not, I don't wish that on us, but what I don't wish is to have a knife put to my neck, my neck. I'm not the biggest guy here in the city. I'm elderly, but I'm still young. We would like to walk out our street and be able to go down it and not worry about, most of the time, it's the, the speeders coming from Highway 44 down the road, and I apologize if I'm taking more time.
I have given you an incredible amount of time, sir, we're gonna have to wrap it up.
So, thank you, and if you can do whatever you can to get us more police.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Bob Genel. I live at 55 Church Street. I, since it's Holy Week, I thought I'd talk about peace for a change. I intended tonight to, I've been inundated by phone calls about the mayor and the council and the struggles. And frankly, I'm gonna disband that tonight. I appreciate Councilman Robinson's civility speech, and I think you've conducted yourself very well, I really do. And I applaud you for that. I suggest some things for you that might help. In 2005, we became strong mayor, a strong council, weak mayor. We had to change, I was council president, we had to change years of, of patterns. What we did, we set the rules that you operate by. And that made it clear, if you wanted to do something, you had a right and a remedy for handling your process. I suggest that you explain that to yourselves and to the people. People don't understand what we're doing. Number two, I think that, and suggest that the people be informed by the strong council concept. One of the comments that I heard was, give the mayor her authority. The authority rests with the council. And I think the public needs to understand that. I would suggest that there be an open education process for that, because you heard tonight, Ms. Bond said, why don't they do this and do this and do this? It doesn't work that way. And I think people need to understand that you've got to operate within the guidelines of the state. And I think people would appreciate it'd make your life easier. Finally, those of you know, I'm an old retired arbitrator mediator. If any of you, mayor, council, have got issues, and I can see some body English, I'll be glad to be a mediator for you, for free, to make peace. And I commend you again tonight for your civility. Thank you very much, and call me if you need me.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Yael Gerard, and I am the executive director for the Weeks Bay Foundation. Thank you, council and mayor, for having public comment tonight. The Weeks Bay Foundation is a nonprofit organization and accredited land trust located on U.S. Highway 98, Fair Hope. We have been working for, to protect coastal resources in Baldwin and Mobile Counties for the last 26 years. From our nearly three decades of experience working in wetland areas, we have seen the loss of these habitats and how those changes affect the surrounding areas. Even with good mitigation, adjacent enhancement, and best management practices in development, the loss of intact wetlands seriously impacts all of our other coastal resources. The wetland resources in and near the proposed fill area next to Mobile Bay in the Battlesworth area will be directly and negatively impacted by this development plan that you're considering. We ask that the Fair Hope City Council continue to oppose this proposal and any future efforts to pursue this project. I would like to cite some of the benefits of wetland systems as stated by the Baldwin County Wetland Conservation Plan. Quote, "Wetlands perform many important functions in the landscape of Baldwin County, and these functions protect the high quality of life enjoyed by its residents and visitors. First, a lucrative commercial and recreational fishing industry thrives in Baldwin County. Fringe wetland habitats provide food and habitat for spawning fish, thus supporting the multimillion dollar commercial fishery in Baldwin County. The principal species are shrimp, oysters, and crab. A 1996 study reported that over $800 million was spent in sport fishing in Alabama. Second, wetlands store floodwater during large rainfall events. Baldwin County is extremely vulnerable to large tropical events originating in the Gulf of Mexico. The increase of impervious surfaces from development throughout a watershed increases the quantity and velocity of stormwater runoff during large rainfall events. Wetlands absorb those floodwaters and can decrease catastrophic flood damage. Third, the quality of water in the bays, rivers, and streams of the Gulf of Mexico is directly related to the success of the tourist industry. Tourists and residents enjoy many water-dependent recreational activities such as boating, skiing, swimming, canoeing, and surfing. Wetlands can remove toxins, excess sediment, and nutrients from runoff and can maintain and improve water quality. And finally, some wetlands recharge groundwater via percolation. It is in the best interests of the public to protect, conserve, enhance, and restore wetland resources to maintain Baldwin County's appeal as a place to live and visit." End quote. The Weeks Bay Foundation and its board of 21 members does hereby unanimously oppose the continued efforts to fill in some 10.49 acres of wetlands within the boundary of Scenic Highway 98, Nelson Road, Heard Road, and Battles Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just want to commend everybody. This is the best council meeting I've been to this year. So, and, and it's not because you passed the, uh, the Agenda Number Six, you know, the one about the people of color.
So, you'd have been just as happy if you'd been...
Yeah, yeah, but I, I just, I just want to thank everybody for the job that you're doing, and, and like I was saying, we not on TV tonight and everything, this is a great thing, you know? I'm not saying that we don't have TV in here, but the cameras are not here.
You're being live streaming. You've got as much coverage as I have tonight.
Yeah, but that mean we getting civil right here. That's a wonderful thing. I thank y'all.
Thank you.
My name's Kate Kissler. I'm the program director at Mobile Bay Keeper, and I want to echo the comments of a few folks before me in saying, I appreciate the council's time, and, and that vein, I'll try to be brief. I think most of the council's already aware of the functions performed by wetlands based on the points made by Ms. Gerard from the Weeks Bay Foundation and others, and their vital importance to our environment and our quality of life. And I think that a lot of the discussion has been on doing what's right for the citizens and for public interest, and what is difficult and depends on different legal interests going on, and, and how ordinances apply, and how the council needs to act to protect Fair Hope's interests. I understand that you have to consider lawsuits, consider the tax dollars of the citizens of Fair Hope, but I also understand, and, and just to be clear, I'm speaking about the Battlesworth wetlands, the area just around Nelson and Heard Road in Point Clear Creek Watershed. So, to continue, I also understand that it's going to be critical to protect those wetlands, and that Fair Hope, I think, is in a very strong position based on the ordinances that are in place and the route that this whole ordeal has followed. So, as the council concludes and goes into the executive session to, to review a number of different litigation items, and I, I understand that that will be one of them, I hope that you all take into account what is in the public interest and think very hard about the precedent that's set when the council doesn't defend vigorously the ordinances of the City of Fair Hope, and make sure that developers and others understand that those ordinances will be enforced and they will continue to protect the citizens and those in the planning jurisdiction. So, with that, I appreciate that, and I, I want to make sure that that is on behalf of Mobile Bay Keeper, as well as our approximately 4,500 members, many of which are in the city limits of Fair Hope. Thank you for your time.
My name is Bert Sonnenstein, and I live on Molokai Drive in Fair Hope. I also want to speak to the issue of the swamp that apparently the mayor is recommending that you allow Buddy Breland to fill the swamp, the 10-acre swamp, and then develop the property. I've seen a, an opinion that says that the insurance companies that are defending this lawsuit have paid and will pay all the legal fees of the town because you have that coverage and they see no liability on behalf of the town. I also believe that this environmental damage is incalculable to, to take a 10-acre parcel that is clearly wetlands and to allow it to be filled for development, it, to me, is environmentally unconscionable. I don't think you've had an environmental review, I don't think you've had a meeting of the neighbors and citizens having to do with your pledge of transparency. There's been no transparency on this. In fact, maybe you're going to act on this in executive session. So, all of the people who live on the roads that have been mentioned have not had an opportunity to express their views. This is also, one side of this, Heard Road is, is one of the larger African-American communities in Fair Hope. And again, the, the concern is that we've heard about environmental problems, but again, it appears that the mayor would proceed ahead. She mentioned to me she didn't think the wetlands were a swamp. The name of that wetlands is Swamp, Tiki Swamp. So, I urge you to do your due diligence in terms of environmental review, community participation, and, and good judgment before proceeding ahead with this settlement with the Breland developer. Thank you.
I'll speak to that too, since you called me out. I'm not making any recommendations for this lawsuit. We have an attorney for that who gives, who advises us. And all I told you is that, in the fairness to the city, we have to look at ordinances that were in place when he placed his application. That's all I told you. That's not making a recommendation one way or the other, but that's legally what we have to do. Otherwise, we open ourselves up to damages, which is what we've done for 40 years when it comes to planning and legal lawsuits. So, like I said during my campaign, and I'm gonna do it, and as, as long as I'm in office, we will make decisions that is in the best interest of the city, and we will be fair to every single person. We're not going to give approvals over here and denials over here for the same thing. Okay? But this lawsuit has been going on for 10 years. Ordinances have been placed during that 10 years that can't apply to someone that had an application in 10 years ago.
May I just make a quick comment? I'm not versed in the details of this, other than having read a letter from an attorney who has researched the, both the legal and the environmental aspects of this. The letter says that all of Fair Hope's legal expenses in defending this suit since 2008 or 2011 have been covered by the two insurance companies. They're bound to cover them by their insurance contract. So, the city is not exposed. He further says that there is no liability, in his opinion, or the insurance company's opinion, on behalf of Fair Hope in this current situation. More importantly, though, to me, issues of what happened in 2008, what's fair, what the lawyers say, has got to take a backseat to the primary importance of the environment of Fair Hope. Because to find ways to allow wetlands to be filled in as a settlement of a lawsuit, to me, is without an environmental review, except something that the Army Corps of Engineers may have done in 2008, just doesn't make sense. And so, I, I just hope you will look at this matter with your own responsibility for the environment and the, the wetlands of Fair Hope, and not simply look at it as a settlement of a nuisance lawsuit, which is what it is. Thank you.
We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this lawsuit.
You have, the insurance companies, excuse me...
I mean, but you said it, we haven't, we don't have liability. We, we have spent hundreds of thousand dollars.
I'm sorry, we talked about...
That's, that is the fact.
We talked about facts.
Those are the facts.
The insurance companies have paid all the legal expenses.
Do, do you know those facts? I mean, I do, but I didn't know if you knew the, the facts.
I don't want to discuss the facts of legal, of pending litigation right now.
Fred Killian, let me address the mayor. I have reviewed this matter, and it's my understanding that your platform was to save legal expenses and to get rid of lawsuits against the city, at least that's a, apparently a noble idea. From what I have found, you, the city had a lot of litigation involving the DIAS triangle, triangle. From what I have found, and you can, if I'm wrong, somebody at the city can certainly tell me if I'm wrong, but there was a settlement because the insurance company did not defend Fair Hope when it was obligated to do so. There are two, there are two obligations of an insurance company providing coverage. One is to provide a defense. The second is to pay any judgment that might be rendered against their insured. The first one is the more poignant obligation of the insurance company. All of the DIAS legal expenses, as I understand it, got paid because it was a bad faith claim filed by Fair Hope against the insurance company because it refused to defend. I'm understanding from mayor, prime mayor Kent, that all of those legal expenses got paid with a 600 and some odd thousand dollar settlement. Then we come to the Breland issue. The city has got insurance coverage from the, from AMIC. I've sent each of you an email that outlines this. And from what I can understand, there was a settlement, but AMIC failed to come in and defend Fair Hope in the Breland matter. So Fair Hope filed an action against AMIC for not having defended it. It also filed a bad faith claim against AMIC because it didn't defend Fair Hope. During that litigation, and I'm giving you figures, if I'm wrong, go give some figures or show where I'm not right. AMIC settled by paying Fair Hope $120,000 or thereabout on the legal expenses. AMIC filed a third-party complaint over against Travelers because AMIC's coverage terminated, I think, in 2011, and Travelers assumed it after that time. Travelers contributed $35,000 to Fair Hope. I have given you, each one of you, a judgment that was rendered by the local court here in Baldwin County in Fair Hope's lawsuit against AMIC. And it found that there was some $86,000, I think approximately that amount, that was still owed that Fair Hope had paid in defending the Breland matter. And the court found that Fair Hope is entitled to a judgment for that amount against the insurance company. Further, the court, and it's item 21 on the folder that I gave you, I try to come up with documents that kind of back up what I say. And if you look at that judgment, not only does it give Fair Hope $86,000 to reimburse it for the attorney's fees, it says it's going to consider how much interest Fair Hope is entitled to because it didn't pay that amount. And then there's a golden egg at the end of that. The golden egg is, that court said, because AMIC refused and had no reasonable basis to refuse to defend Fair Hope, that there was still a bad faith claim that Fair Hope has, that you've got against AMIC. Now, I don't know if you're familiar with bad faith. I was a trial lawyer for 54 years. I've tried bad faith cases against insurance companies. I'm not trying to get on a stallion right now, but let me give you a little example. I had a case where an insurance company failed to pay $46,000 in disability benefits to a lawyer, filed a lawsuit against the company. It had no basis really not to pay him. We got $46,000, and we got $1 million in punitive damages against the company for its bad faith refusal to pay. Now, that's what you've still got pending. And I submit, from what I have been able to determine, your expenses have been paid, no matter, and if I'm wrong, somebody show me where I'm wrong. I've tried to come up and give you facts, and you've still got the action pending against AMIC for not having defended you. And that's, so don't, if the idea is, as I see it, it's let's settle the Breland lawsuit. If you settle the Breland lawsuit, I'm understand, and I've given you an email, which is what I understood the settlement to be, and that is, he won't get any money judgment against you. He will dismiss his lawsuit. And thirdly, we'll allow him to fill in 10 and a half acres. That's the most grievous thing about what we're complaining about here, is filling in 10 and a half acres of wetlands. So, and then you go to, okay, if we're going to settle with Breland for that, we can get rid of the lawsuit against AMIC. Well, if you want to settle with him and you want to dismiss two lawsuits, you can put over here and you call them, "Look what I did. I settled two lawsuits. We don't have those anymore. Not going to be any more expenses." But you didn't do your duty, in my opinion, in preserving the 10 and a half acres. I have said to you, I think you've got a great defense to his lawsuit. I've gone through facts as to why I think, I realize you've got Matt, who's a great lawyer, and you've got Tut, and you've got different lawyers' opinions. If you are afraid of that lawsuit, then defend it, and you've got insurance coverage. AMIC provides you $5 million coverage per occurrence. Breland ain't going to get a big judgment like that, but if he does, you've got insurance coverage to take care of it. So I implore you, please, when you go back and you have a discussion about what you're going to do, I highly recommend that you do not allow a bow-in to Mr. Breland. I've given you all kind of facts why he doesn't have a correct lawsuit. The main thing he had to do, I'm taking too much time...
With all due respect, Mr. Killian, we're going to have to wrap this up.
I'm taking too much time. Thank you for your attention, and I ask you to seriously consider what I've mentioned up here tonight. Thank you.
Hopefully, I'm the last for you all. My name is Steve Yule. I live on 6081 Nelson Drive. And yes, I'm going to talk about the same thing, but I would just like to ask, before any actions taken, has anyone actually taken time to ride their bikes or walk down Nelson Scenic Highway, Battlesworth Road, Twin Beach, Heard Road, and back? You'll be amazed at how much water. And yes, it is a swamp. It's absolutely amazing. And we're talking about filling a portion of that in. I just want to pass on to some bad optics. We have Mr. Breland, who bought the 65 acres for about $510,000. He got a song. He paid a pittance for it because the land was not developable. So he's been gaming the system, and it looks like we may be giving in. Fast forward to about three weeks ago, Mr. Delamore, one of our new neighbors on Nelson Drive, just bought a house, or bought a piece of property, happens to be next to Councilman Robinson's house. And they determined, the city, that the back quarter of that property was wetlands, and that he could not touch that piece of the property. So he had to go to the planning committee and ask for variance to move the house forward because he had to contend with the buffer zone and the wetlands area. Yet, a single resident of Fair Hope is denied use of wetlands on a piece of property he has, yet it looks like Mr. Breland, who is a wealthy developer, who has taken a very small investment, trying to turn it into a large development, we're going to let him fill wetlands. And I have to ask, what's the difference between a single resident and a wealthy developer? Thank you.
Thank you. Dare I ask if there's anyone else for public participation?
Mr. Gerrard, I won't pick your mic. I'll just give you 119 petitioners appealing that you stick with defending this suit and you not fill wetlands and enforce your orders.
They're not lined up outside right now, are they?
A lot of them are in the lobby.
I hear them clapping out there. Okay, going once on public participation? Going twice? Do we have anyone else from the lobby? Okay, I will now close public participation. Counsel, I'll read this letter. As a City Attorney Marion E. Nguyen, that's not me, that's him. I hereby request the City Council go into executive session based on Section 36-25A-783 to discuss pending and potential litigation. City Attorney Nguyen does hereby declare that the City Council, the city of Fair Hope, rise from regular City Council meeting on Monday, April 10, 2017, to go into executive session. The City Council shall be in executive session for approximately 30 minutes. At the end of the executive session, the City Council shall return to the City Council chambers to resume the regular City Council meeting, and we will just adjourn. We will not take action, I can tell you that. The time is now 8:19. The City Council asks the DIAS to go into executive session. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say nay.
All in favor say aye.